Good evening, everyone. I want to call our February Jackson Master County School Board meeting to order, please. First, we have invocation by Dr. Catlett.
Let us pray. Our dear Father, Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for just all that goes into school district, school support staff, cafeteria, teachers, administrators in this board on this appreciation luncheon. We thank them for the job they do and their leadership and for Dr. King and his vision. Lord, just be with this meeting and help us make all decisions based on what's best for our children, families, and our school district. I ask you protect us, forgive us our sins. In your name we pray. Amen.
Join me for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Before we go into our usual business, we have Madison's chorus that's going to perform for us shortly, so I'm going to ask all the board members if we go down to the audience so we can view their performance.
Well, we are thrilled to be here tonight because we want to perform for you in particular, but also because this is our first live audience in a year. So, we've been hungry to perform for real people. So, we have done some videos and some things and gotten creative, but they're super excited to perform for a live audience. So, we recorded a Valentine's concert. I don't know if you saw it on the Facebook page or some other social media platforms. And originally, we were supposed to perform for you in February, and it was going to be Valentine's themed. So, we're just going to do it a little later now, just going to revive Valentine's Day. You'll hear how sweet it is to be loved by you. Soloists in that piece are Chloe Price and Cody Hooper. And then "Good Night, Sweetheart," a duet by Cody Hooper and Jack Craig. And then Izzy Arthurs is going to do a solo as well. So, without further ado.
Hey, everybody. I'm Izzy Arthurs. I'm a senior at Madison. And my mom was thrilled when I picked this song because it was made, I guess circa 1980-something. And so, I do love it. And it was, it's not exactly Valentine's themed. And when I think about it, it's kind of like, well, I'd say like me being a senior and I'm about to leave a little bit, like in a day or two kind of thing. So, this is "Take Me On," and I hope you guys like it as much as my mom does. The things that you say, is it a lie or just to play my worries away? Here are the things I've got to remember, you're shying away, but I'll be coming for you anyway. Take on me, take me on. I'll be gone in a day or two. Take on me, take on me, take on me, take me on. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started, is Principal Chad Guthrich, is he still in the building? He raised, stand up and raise your hand, Principal. Thank you for hosting us.
Yes.
Now, our strategic goals are three A's, academics, athletics, and arts. And I think Madison has simplified all three of those here tonight. Let's give them another round of applause. Thanks again, Madison. Okay, is Janice, are you on? Is she on mute? She's on? Okay.
Yes, I am. I'm on.
Good, thank you. Okay, first, we'll go through our approvals, approval of constant agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
You got a motion?
Second.
You got a second? Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I." Those opposed, motion carried. Approval of the agenda with one addendum. You all have that copy? And to the addendum, JCM High School. Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
The motion of Janice?
Second.
Second. By Doris. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. The addendum was included in the approval of the agenda. Do we have any public comments, Secretary? Thank you. Okay. Before the board, we have Jackson Master County Association Board, your teachers. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we have action items. The first one is budget amendments. We all covered those in our work session. Does any, are there any questions concerning those? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
You got a motion by Sarnell?
Second.
Second by Debbie. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, action item is school calendar 2021 through 2022 and 2022 to 2023. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
No motion? Doris?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next action item is policy 1.403 to 1.906. They were discussing, we had them read, this is the second reading, so this is the meeting that we approved the policies. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Debbie. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Darnell. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next action item is policy 5.3051, FFCR A-leave. You got a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Scott. You got a second?
Second.
Got a second by AJ. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Last action item is Community Unity Project 2021 with preliminary costs. In that, this is a recommendation coming from long-range planning, doesn't need a second. So, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Darnell? You got a second? Second by Sheri. Any questions? All in favor, let it be known by a sign of "I."
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We didn't have any added, added up, the only, we had the addendum added. But you didn't have anything removed. So, next up is superintendent report. Dr. King?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to just reinforce the belief statement of the board. And one of the belief statements, I think, that we saw tonight was to build strong, successful programs in the three broad areas, academics, athletics, and the arts. And I think we walked away from one of our sessions saying that we wanted to make sure that we give our arts program, an audience, to be able to show the talent and the great work, as oftentimes, we don't see that on the basketball court, football field, soccer field. So, I think tonight, or this evening, it was a delight for us to see the arts program, to see our chorus teacher, our band director, and our art teacher put on a great production. And I think we would certainly be remiss if we didn't thank Principal Guthrie for allowing us to use his team. We have Ms. Lindsay Patterson, who is the director of chorus. We have Ms. Kristy Hayes, who's an art teacher. And we also have Ms. Kristy White, who is our band director. And I am so appreciative of what those dedicated teachers have done and what our students did for us this evening. And also, we give a shout out to our parents just for choosing us and giving us an opportunity to work with their children. So, I just wanted to share that with the board, that we continue to believe that building these programs around academics, arts, and athletics is going to be key as we maintain our vision being best by any measure. The second thing I want to acknowledge or recognize is Ms. Dimitris, I don't, she probably is behind the stage getting some stuff, for the setup for our board appreciation dinner this evening. She, I really appreciate the work that she puts into it and the professionalism that she's demonstrated there. The next, I guess, item I have is recognition at this point. And I want to just read and share with the audience this, and then Greg will assist to me. Last month, the last week of the month, the State of Tennessee School Board Association recognized school board and the work that school board members do in communities. And I think I have been fortunate, I just did an interview and I talked about the school board, and I've been fortunate to have a great board and working with a board who's focused on what's best for students and how do we create the conditions for teachers to give the best for our students. And so, this evening, although the appreciation or the recognition is the latter part of January, we're probably in latter part of February due to snow and things like that. So, I don't want people to go on the record thinking that we are recognizing school board appreciation a month later. It was just because of other reasons, right? So, I just want to say the Jackson Madison County School System joined districts across the state in recognizing Tennessee School Boards Appreciation Week in January. In addition to our meal earlier this evening, we want to put a bow in our board appreciation efforts by gifting each one of them with a small token of appreciation. You all have been elected by this community to oversee the vision, design, and structure of this district. The opportunity to lead alongside this group is an honor and an opportunity I do not take lightly. And I say that again, I do not take leading alongside with you all lightly. I put my 100% in it, and I tell you all every day, I want to make sure I do what's best for this board. And I hope that I continue to demonstrate that. And when I don't, I think we have a relationship that you all tell me when I don't, and we make the correction because one thing we are, and that's for students. I look forward to our collective work for the benefit of students and families in Jackson and Madison County. So, Mr. Hammond, would you please come forward and call the names, we'll call your name to receive a symbol of our gratitude for the work that you do for this community. Again, we appreciate our school board members, and we want to just show you, just give you a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you, Dr. King. Mr. Chairman and board members, when your name in your bio is read, please come to the center so your picture can be taken. We'll start with Board Chairman James P. Johnson. James P. Johnson was born and raised in Madison County by parents who knew the value of education and had the expectations that all eight of their children graduate from high school and beyond. He is a product of the Jackson Madison County School System, attending Demarc, West Junior High, and West Senior High along with all the siblings. He graduated and received a bachelor's degree of business administration from Lambeth College and an MBA from Union University. James currently works for Civic Core, Core Civic in Whiteville, Tennessee as the business manager. Mr. Johnson attends New St. Luke Missionary Baptist Church and serves on the Board of Deacons and is a Sunday School teacher. His wife, Patricia Johnson, and Pete have two children, Joy Johnson and Wesley Johnson. Both of their children graduated from Southside High School. Board Chairman James P. Johnson. Next, our school board vice chair and board parmentarian, A.J. Massey. A Jackson Madison County School System product, A.J. Massey has established deep roots in West Tennessee. The son of a JMCSS teacher and coach, A.J. graduated from Jackson Central Mary High School, where he received, quote, "the highest form of education in both academics and life." A.J. played football at the University of Mississippi and later received his Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration from Union University. He currently, he's currently in the vice president's role at the Bank of Jackson. He received his Master's of Business Administration from Union in May of 2014. A.J. enjoys fishing, woodworking, reading, and cheering on the Cubs and the Rebels. A.J.'s been married to Lauren, his middle school sweetheart, for 16 years. They have two sons, Brooks and Wales. A.J. Massey. Doris Black. Doris is a retired public school teacher with over 38 years' experience. Her backgrounds includes classroom teaching, teacher coaching, and mentoring, new teacher induction, and administrative, administration. She was voted Teacher of the Year twice during her career while serving in Arkansas and Wisconsin. She has ties to Jackson for many years and became very familiar and attentive with the Vision 2020 process. She fills her passion and calling or is in public education. Doris received her undergraduate degree in education from the University of Arkansas, a master's degree in interdisciplinary studies in curriculum and instruction from National Louis University, and other specialty training from the University of Wisconsin and Marquette University. Doris Black. Andre Darnell. Andre is a second-generation native of Jackson, Tennessee. After graduating from Jackson Central Mary, he graduated from the ITT Technical Institute in Memphis before going on to a career in supply chain operations, project management, and procurement. Currently, he's working on his bachelor's degree in business from Lane College. And he was recently awarded the 2019-2020 Volunteer Center for Rural Developments McWhorter Scholarships Award after being nominated by Dr. Logan Hampton, President of Lane College. Andre is a co-founder of the I Am JCM Coalition. The Coalition also provides scholarships with funds raised at the annual JCM Alumni Tailgate fundraiser. Andre and his wife, Lakita, have been married for 25 years, and they're raising their three sons in the way of the Lord. He also serves faithfully in his church. Andre Darnell. Ms. Sheri Franks. Sheri was elected to the JMCSS School Board in August of 2020. She attended high school at Parkway South High School in St. Louis, Missouri. She's married to Brad Franks, and they have three boys in the Jackson Madison County School System. Lance is at Madison, Gavin is at the New Cyber School, and Jace is at Pope Elementary. After attending high school, Sheri attended Arkansas State University, where she received a BA in marketing and transportation. She then attended the University of Phoenix to receive her MBA. In addition, she has completed 62 hours of her PhD from Capella University, but she's put that on hold due to other commitments. She was blessed to stay at one company throughout her career. She was hired at C.H. Robinson Worldwide in 1991 at an entry-level employee. The company has, was over 800 employees, employee-owned. After almost 20 years, when expecting their third child in 2001, Franks took on the role of stay-at-home mom. C.H. Robinson was a wonderful opportunity for growth and learning. It was a teaching ground for how to work with people from diverse backgrounds to reach a common goal. That same hope is what Sheri has for the next four years of service as a board member with our district. Sheri Franks. Debbie Massey Gahl. Debbie was born and raised in Madison County. She attended and graduated from Madison County Public Schools. She and her husband Gary have owned and operated a construction company for 33 years. They also raised two sons who are educated in this school system. Debbie is now employed at Postal Fleet Services. Fun fact, Debbie is a beekeeper, and honey from her farm can be found in stores around Madison County. Debbie Gahl. Ms. Janice Hampton was elected to the board in 2012. She's currently in her third term. As for why she decided to run, Hampton said, "I want to see every student succeed in becoming college, career, and workforce-ready." Hampton previously served as vice chairman of the board in 2017 and 2018, and was elected to serve in that role again in 2018 and 2019. She was also elected an at-large member for the Tennessee School Board Association. Ms. Hampton has worked for the Jackson Madison County Juvenile Court Services for more than 24 years. Previously, she had taught Head Start and served as an instructor at the Madison Business School and West Tennessee Business School. and West Tennessee Business School. She hosts agrees from Lane College and Freed Hardeman University. Mr. Scott Gatlin. Scott has been a full-time educator since 1982. He has worked in Missouri, Arkansas, and in Tennessee, filling the roles of classroom teacher, principal, athletic director, and superintendent. He is currently employed by the Youth Town of Tennessee, serving as the principal of George Thomas Junior Academy, the campus school for youth town residents. Gatlin has served on several boards, most recently as a, uh, member of the Tennessee Secondary Schools Athletic Association Board of Control. He currently serves as a shepherd at his home church, Skyline Church of Christ. He and his wife Jamie have two married sons and three grandchildren. He enjoys float camping, fishing, and grilling on his patio with family and friends. Scott Gatlin. Ladies and gentlemen, your Jackson Madison County School System board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Dr. King, and to your team, um, for making us look good. Thank you. And we, uh, as I always say, we, it's not about us, it's about our kids. And that's what we're here for. Before, before, uh, I ask for adjournment, I wanted to thank all the different schools, uh, administrators, teachers, bus drivers, and all those folks that actually, um, gave, sent us notes during, um, School Board Appreciation Month. I got cards and letters and, uh, I'm gonna read one of them. I got a lot, about 78 different cards, hearts, and letters from, uh, um, South Elementary and from one of the kindergarten classes, Mrs. Teague's class. Naomi thinks I'm the best. So I'm gonna read this to y'all. It states, "Best board member ever. Dear Mr. Johnson, you are so great to us. In my opinion, you are the best board member because you gave us laptops. And you gave us a roof over our heads. And you gave us playground equipment to run around the roses. You gave us wonderful teachers and student teachers. Tell me, what do we, did we do to, um, to, what did we do to get all of these things? Nothing. You also gave us books to learn with. You are the greatest." Thanks, Naomi. That's what we're here for, guys. Anything else before we, uh, ask for adjournment? We get one, the most, no adjourn?
So moved.
Got a motion? You got a second?
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.